So, um, uh, we're gonna go ahead and get started as Vince gets us on YouTube.
We're there.
We're there. Hello, hello folks on YouTube. It's, it's good to see you. Welcome to Father's Cup. You can't talk back to me. Uh, I don't know if Vince can monitor that to see if there's anything to check.
I will do it. Yep.
Yeah, in case somebody sends us a comment or something on there. We, we don't want to leave them hanging. Um, let's see, um, preacher Mona.
Yes, sir.
Will you please, please start us out in prayer? Get us on the right path.
Yes, sir. Oh, thank you heavenly Father. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Father, we just want to tell you, thank you, Lord God. You've been so good to us all day long, Father. Watching over us, oh God, providing for us, protecting us. And Father God, as we come together as one heart, one mind. Father God, we ask, oh God, in the name of Jesus, that you would just strengthen us, Father. Give us understanding. Open up our ears, Father. Open up our eyes, Father. And Father, we ask, oh God, that you open up our spiritual mind, that we will understand what the Holy Spirit is saying to us tonight. Father, we thank you, Lord God, for the teacher. Father God, use his lips, oh God, to bring forth truth and manifestation in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, we just thank you for everyone that's coming on the line tonight. Bless them, Lord God. Give them a word tonight, oh God, that they can hold on to, Father, and use it, Father, that it will enhance their lives and their Christian growth. We just thank you tonight for everything that you've already done, Father. We acknowledge you in all of our ways. Lord, direct our paths tonight. Help us to just trust in you and not trust in the flesh, but look to the spirit.
Yes.
Father God, and we honor you, and we bless you, and we praise you for all that you've already done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
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 Amen. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for that prayer. I needed that prayer today. I needed that one. Amen.
Amen. Praise the Lord. God is good.
Yes. All right. So we are in Proverbs. We're continuing on Proverbs. We're gonna go right on through it. Keep on through it. Um, the, um, we are in chapter, uh, twenty-three. I jumped to twenty-five last week. Uh, and I had to jump back, make sure we covered this ground. Um, and you know, it, it, and the thing about Proverbs is that it'll go so far and then it'll refer back. It'll, um, give some of the same lessons in, in a different angle. That's gonna happen again tonight. It must mean to mean, maybe, and I'll, I'll yield to, to, uh, evangelist, uh, Mona Lisa. So if I'm wrong, she gonna clear her throat.
Sir.
So clear your throat if I'm wrong about this. But when the Bible repeats, when the, the Bible repeats itself, it, it means something.
Oh, by the way.
When I believe when he said, feed my sheep, feed my sheep, feed my sheep.
Amen.
I believe that there's an emphasis when it, when, when he says it again, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and then, like you have the synoptic gospels, and you have those layers, and, and just the same thing, but it's told from a different angle.
Yes, sir.
It just tells me the importance of that.
Yes.
Some folks have tried to pick through it and say, well, this was said a little different than the other. And so the Bible's contradiction, dictating itself. Well, the thing is, they must have never been to a concert. Cause I've been to a concert when a, a bass man is singing, or a tenor is singing, a soprano is singing, an alto is singing, contralto is singing. And they're different voices, but they're singing the same song.
Amen.
And it just makes it fuller, right?
Yes. Amen.
And so here we are going to go into this, and we're gonna repeat some things. And so let's not say, well, you know, we already said that. Let's look at it again, cause the Bible's asking us to look at it again, right?
Right.
Amen.
With some fresh eyes, just like, Lord, now, wha- what are you telling me about this, this time? Right? All right.
And Pastor, a lot of times, um, going back and reading stuff over and over again, you get a different revelation with, with each read, um, because you're at a different level or different place in your life. And so the word comes to you different. So it, it, it helps to repeat.
Hmm.
Amen.
Okay. Yep. A- absolutely. We, we do, um, uh, we all are going through different stages of life.
Absolutely.
And I know that I'm seeing things differently um, than when I was twenty-one. And when I was thirty-one.
Amen.
And when I was forty-one. I'm, I'm seeing, seeing some things differently. Seeing some things differently. So let's go to chapter twenty-three. And let's talk about wisdom a little bit. And if somebody would read, um, twenty-three and twenty-three. Let's talk about it. Is anybody in position now?
Okay. I'm coming from the New King James Version.
Okay, good.
Twenty-three and twenty-three?
Twenty-three, chapter twenty-three, uh, verse twenty-three.
Buy the truth and do not sell it. Also wisdom and instruction and understanding.
Okay. The, the speaker here, we think is, um, I think this is a Solomon one. So, um, correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I believe this is Solomon speaking this time. And, um, he, he is saying, and we're saying that he's saying it to his son, but I believe he's saying it to everybody. Right? Um, uh, King may be saying it to his subjects, telling, saying the whole town, but he's, he's almost conversational. He's saying, uh, buy, buy the truths.
Uh huh.
And, and, and do not sell it. Don't, don't trade it, right? Right? Did they, did folks say that about land one time? Try to buy you some land? And, and don't sell it? Why, why is the author saying that? Now, what is he saying? Why does he say that? What is he saying? Go buy the truth. What, what does that mean? Do you, I mean, can you go to the store and get it?
No, you can't.
No. How, how do you buy it though? So, so that, that's why we go back over this thing, cause if somebody just read that now. Right? The way I have it on here, it says, or mine, it says, buy the truth and do not sell it. So folks might go to Amazon or Walmart.
Can't buy it.
Or go try to say, well, let me go make me some money so I can have the truth. But what is it saying? What, does anybody kind of get an idea of, you know, the Bible uses these words sometimes, like it's at a marketplace, right? But what is it saying? How to get it? How do we get, how do we get the truth? How do we get the truth, the wisdom? This is, this is an attitude toward wisdom, my commentary, saying, how do we, how do, how do we buy it? Yo, quiet. I'm gonna have to start calling names. See, Chris don't wait on you that long. He'll wait on you. He said, oh, he said, okay, well, I'm trying to put, I'm trying, y'all ain't trying to work me now, cause I know y'all know how to go get it. You know where to go get it from.
Is it possible by accepting the truth and believing and doing what the truth says?
Amen. Thank you so much. And you, yes, yes, indeed.
Praise the Lord.
You can see me clapping my hands. It is, you, you first, you gotta accept it.
Yes, indeed.
Right? See, a- a- y'all ever heard the, uh, expression, I guess it's slang, but I ain't buying that. That, that doesn't mean you not purchasing like cash. I mean, I'm not buying what you're saying. Right?
Yeah.
And, and so as Sister Gwyn was telling us, we need to buy it, if, you know, um, uh, by faith, you know, Abraham received, by faith, he received righteousness. Just by believing enough, right?
Amen.
And his faith was counted as.
Righteousness.
Righteousness. We read his story. We know he went all the way straight up to six o'clock. Right? Then his wife did a couple of shenanigans and stuff, you know, but however, through his faith, it was counted as righteousness.
Amen.
Who did he, you know, he, you know, he was, he listened to his wife for a little bit. However, he had been made a promise.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and God told him, all right, he gave him that promise, and then he said, take that promise up and kill him. And he followed through, went all the way up there, and sure enough.
That's right.
A, a ram in the bush.
Amen.
And he learned on that hill that his God would provide.
Yes.
We all learn, right?
Yes, sir.
And even in the darkest times, our God will provide. And just as, um, a- as, uh, Sister Gwyn was telling us about that, is that we get that through acceptance, through accepting what God said for us. What'd he say? There are a whole lot of people who know the word, know of the word, have read the word, and some people can't quote the word. But the thing is, is sometimes we can quote the word, but we haven't accepted the word.
Amen.
Am I right about that?
That is true. Yes.
Know the word, standing, singing it, and we have not accepted it. But this, um, this wise king, even though he made some mistakes, at least he has sense enough to say, hey, have you seen some wisdom out there? You need to buy that.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what we need to be doing. If you, not, not foolishness. Everybody trying to buy some food.
You're right.
Come on. That, it, right? Some folks are wanting to buy all kinds of foolishness. They want to do all kinds of foolishness and be good at it.
Amen.
Amen.
Look, I, and, you know, I'm not hating on anybody who's getting on TikTok and doing this and following that and doing that. And, you know, and, 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 and to, to everything, there's a season. But you don't need to be smart about TikTok dancing and don't know anything about what God has you to do.
That's right.
Now, that's, that's my deal. You know, have fun. Go on Facebook and, and find your friends. I'm on Facebook and stuff, and I'll hit somebody happy birthday from time to time, or show some likes on there or whatever. Um, but th- there's a time that I need to be on Bible study.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
There's a time I need to be in the Word.
Amen. Amen. Pastor, word that came to mind was investment.
Oh, yes. There you go.
Investing your time and your energy into what is true, um, and that's what comes from God. So when you do that, then you're able to, you know, gain the wisdom that only God can give, that is gonna last. So, um, that's one of the things I was thinking about, not investing so much in, you know, the things of this world and the things that often, um, baffle our attention, but investing in the things of God so that we can gather the truth.
Amen.
A- absolutely. I, I like that word, investment. Uh, I like that. Because, you know, investments do, do, um, you know, this is what happens. You put your goods somewhere, and when you come back, it, it becomes a manifold blessing. And if you keep holding on to it, it becomes a manifold blessing.
Amen.
So it becomes, uh, you become enriched, right? Because of the multiplication that happens. And I believe that wisdom and, and, and word, and, and staying in the Word, and staying with people in the Word.
Amen.
Amen. Yes.
To reinforce.
Oh, yes.
That, that's why this is important. You, we come and we say this right here, but it's good to hear somebody else to say that. It's good for, uh, Sister Gwyn to come and say, this is what I see about it, and, and nail it on the head and say, you know, better than I had in, she, she said it better than I had in notes. You see what I'm saying? It's in the house. God said he'll supply every joint.
Yes.
Right? And so.
Amen.
So, the, this person that say, th- this is, you know, um, I, our whole life is, is really dictated, and I want to say this carefully, by the, the values and choices that we make in response to the values we have. Would anybody agree or disagree with that?
Agree.
Right.
Agree with that.
Agree.
Okay.
Amen.
And, and let me, let me give, let me give a scripture that, that might say that, right? Choose this day who you serve. Right? In the Bible tells us, say, is, is asking us, okay, well, you know, you need to kind of choose, um, make a, um, you know, a decision. Okay?
Amen.
Which way are you going to do? And that's what we have to do. Um, what, how many thousand times a day? How many thousands of times that we have to decide? Uh, what? All day long?
Mm-hmm.
Come on, every day. Um, all day long, twenty-four seven.
Oh.
Yes.
You gotta make sure that we are on guard um, on our decision.
Amen.
You know why? Because decisions are like this. So what if somebody get, you know, back in the day, we, now, now we got GPS, right? But back in the day, they give you a list of directions. What if they give you a, a list of ten part, you know, go here, turn there, take a, take, you know, turn there, and you do nine of them right? How many of them do it? How many curves you gotta get lost?
One.
Okay. You, you can, you could get lost at any section if you take one of those things. You didn't do all ten of them right, and then turn left at the wrong place, you see? Right? So it's important to be under the influence of wisdom all day long.
Amen.
Every day. And in every segment of your life. Right?
Amen.
Right. Pastor, can I read this from my commentary?
Yes, please. Help me out.
It says, we should have the mentality that we are willing to gain truth and wisdom and gain it at a cost, instead of wanting to forsake it for a profit.
Hmm.
And it puts me in mind that, um, when we, we know that, uh, siding with, um, certain views or political agendas that goes against the will of God and God's people um, for our personal gain or political gain.
Right.
Um, that, that puts us at odds with wisdom. That's a profit.
Yeah.
We're taking that doesn't, that we can't put in a bank. Um, in, in the heavily bank. And, and so we, we become, um, perverters of God's precious gift.
Yep.
And that's sickening to God.
Yep. I, I believe it is.
Mm-hmm.
Leave us a stench to his nostrils.
Mm-hmm.
When, when we supposed to know, we know how, we suppose, he teaches us, give all these examples of how to treat one another. And then folks want to do like they do each other. I mean.
Oh, my goodness.
Husband and wife's murder-suicide in Wilmington yesterday. Apartment complex, folks said, that he's the nicest guy. You see, this is what we have to tell people. The path to hell gonna be full of good people.
Yeah.
They're gonna say the nice, they're gonna be, oh, man, they were so nice.
Mm-hmm.
They were so nice. But see, nice don't hold you, man, when Satan tried to possess you.
That's right.
Trying to possess you, nice won't get it.
No.
Care nothing about nice. I, I want people to get that now.
Mm-hmm.
Cause he don't play fair.
Absolutely.
And he would take every opportunity. So that's why we have to be on guard all day, every day, twenty-four seven.
Just when you drop your goal, when you feel like you can be nice, when you feel like that you don't have to sleep with your fist balled up just in case Satan drops something on your sleep, you have to be ready. You have to be, be, every day you have to straighten up, you have to have on what? The full armor.
The full armor of God.
Yeah, to have the full armor. We need to make sure that we purchase, we, we do our due diligence um, to believe, to work on our faith, um, to let God work on our faith, and don't trade it. Don't, don't trade it. I don't know if y'all played Monopoly before. But once you get with cards, and you getting them cards, don't trade it. Put you some houses on it.
That's right.
Don't trade it. Sit there, wait. There'll be somebody come around and stop that.
Well, well, you know, Pastor, you know, the verse, you know, when, when it also says, you know, there's a cost to that. There, there, there's a cost that, you know, we have to, because the desires of our hearts is we want things and we want it our way. But it doesn't work that way. I mean, we have to work hard to stay, um, in line with God. Because to me, I'm, I'm fighting against myself and my self-desires.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the hardest fight there is for me. Is the, the, the reason I can put to say, okay, uh, you know, this political thing is gonna give me this kind of edge, or, you know, if I do this, you know, so on and so forth. If I don't, you know, if I'm not honest with myself about what cost it takes that I have to stay away from these things, or I have to stop doing that, no matter how explicitly it makes me feel.
Right.
Then I'm not being honest about, you know, the, the relationship I want to have with God.
Right. And, and the Bible was telling us that Vince is not really fighting with Vince. Fighting again. Oh, thank you, Ver. She got to know who you fighting with. He might walk in the mirror looking like Vince. But everybody possessed.
That's right.
Okay. You just got to decide who you gonna be possessed by. You, you got to see if you're gonna do like, uh, Sister Gwyn said. Are you, who, whose reporter are you gonna accept?
That's right.
And, and, you know, how are you gonna indoctrinate yourself? What are you gonna feed your faith with? There you go. And are you gonna feed it? Are you choking it out? Are you, are you feeding it with iron sharpening iron? Are you getting yourself a word in the morning, sometimes in the noonday? Sometimes right before you go to bed?
Amen.
Right?
Wow.
So, you know, be, being faithful and, uh, with, being faithful with your faith and saying, look, um, yeah, and, and, and we need to have, we need to cherish, and, and I think the Bible says a whole lot about value. And, and they tell it all kind of different ways. It's like gold. It's like silver. It's like this, right? And we, we just gotta say, you know, man, I'm not selling, I'm not selling this. There's some stuff, you know, there's a whole lot of stuff in my house I'll sell. You know what I'm saying? But, but we have to be where this, this wisdom, this faith, the relationship with Jesus, the re- the revelations that he gives me. I'm not trading it.
Amen.
You know, there are people, I'm, I'm here to tell you, I sit there, and, and, and y'all know I reference this a lot, cause I, when I read this stuff, and then when I saw the movie, I'm saying, what in the world? When I saw, uh, the Gaianna massacre and, and Jim Jones. Everybody traded. Everybody traded.
Yes. That's right.
Everybody closed their book and listened to a man. They closed their own Bible. Yeah. They, they, somebody should have raised their hand and say, hey, uh, hey dude, uh, wait a minute, you know? That, that don't say that.
Yes.
And they didn't say that, you know, you know, and then you could say it respectfully, but oh, oh, by, you know, y'all could just say, well, you know, Pastor, after prayer, I, I'm gonna call you and talk to you about this right here. You know what I'm saying? Cause so enough.
I don't like, I don't like Kool-Aid.
Okay. This is what I'm saying. So enough, we had to have a discussion.
Yeah.
On some of that stuff he was telling people.
Yeah.
And we have, we have to say, you know, we have to call it what it is when we see it. And not trade, like, you know, that, uh, there's a lot of sacrifice that goes in of being faithful.
Right.
Amen.
There, there's a lot of, of lonely nights and lonely days. There are a lot of people turning up their nose at you and turning their back on you for being faithful. There's family that you lost for being faithful.
That's right.
Come on now.
That's true.
And you gonna go and trade that? You, you, you gonna trade, and that's what is, don't, don't trade that now. You, you go trade something else at the yard sale, but don't leave that on the table.
I'll tell you.
Okay. All right. Um, this is what, uh, I tell y'all about Spurgeon. I like Spurgeon. This is what Spurgeon says. He, he was, you know, he's from Europe, so he says things that look like, you know, speaks backwards sometimes. He said, sell it not. He said, sell it not. He says it twice. It costs. He said, sell it not, he says it twice. It calls Christ too dear. Sell it not.
Mm hmm, yeah.
You made a good bargain when you bought it. Sell it. Sell it not. It has not disappointed you. It has satisfied you. And made you blessed. Sell it not. You want it. Sell it not. You will want it. Sell it not. The hour of death is coming on and the day of judgment is close unto its heels. Sell it not. Why cannot buy its like again? You can never find better.
Mm hmm. Cause like it said, they're not they're not growing land anymore.
No, no, no. And and your salvation.
Yes.
The relationship.
Yes.
Right? I let's let's do a little in depth here, okay, since we on this, all right? Cause I think this is a key message. Let's 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 see what what Revelation might say. Can somebody grab Revelation three and eighteen? Let's find out about it. You see what kinda stuff. Anybody got that so we can find out if we gonna buy something? Revelation to tell you what you gonna need in the in the in the latter days. What are we buying? Y'all see it? Anybody got Revelation three and eighteen?
I counsel you to buy from my gold refined in the fire. That you may be rich. And white garments, that you may be clothed. That the shame of your nakedness not may not be revealed. And anoint your eyes with eye sap. With eye sap that you may see.
Okay, that that's in the last.
That's it.
You see, right? Am I right about that?
Yep.
You don't wanna be naked and you don't wanna be blind, right? So if you gonna buy something, buy gold from the forest. Be that refined.
Revelation three and eight.
Cause we gonna come as pure gold.
Amen.
And that's that's bought with a price now.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's bought with a price.
Mm hmm.
So so but but don't don't, but look folks, don't don't sell it now. I know it's Christmas. People come around, they might see that thing shining, they might see you shining and stuff, but don't let them buy it. You could, look, the look, there there are some things, y'all ladies know this right here. Somebody say, I want that. And what you do, you don't say, you know, sometimes you give it, you give some things away, right?
Right.
But if it's a one of a kind and stuff like that, and it's supposed to be for you, and somebody gave it now, right?
Right, I can.
You say, you don't, you don't give it, you say, I tell you where you can get it.
Right. Yes.
You you can't have this one. But I can sure tell you where you can get it.
Right, amen.
Right? And that's what we are about salvation and our relationship with Christ. Now you can't have my relationship. Now you can't take that one.
Amen.
I can tell you where to get it.
Yes, I do.
If if you go.
Amen.
Go on your knees, you go to the altar and 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 come on and shed a tear too. And and tear it there for a moment, you can get the same thing.
Amen.
But I'm not selling this one. Okay. All right, okay, anybody good with that now?
Amen. Yes, amen.
Okay, so so yeah, the when we all throughout Proverbs. Proverbs were interchange. It it'll say the same thing, but it'll interchange. It'll say um. Hold on to this truth. He'd say, hold on to this instruction. He'd say, hold on to this understanding, right? But all of that is wisdom.
Mm hmm.
Okay? All right, okay, all right, so let's do a couplet here, because we getting back in the couplets, let's do twenty four and twenty five. You you remember these? It's coming from a different. Proverbs twenty three, twenty four and twenty five.
The Father of righteousness will greatly rejoice. And he who begets a while, a wise child will delight in him.
Okay. Ke- keep on, good do do.
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
Let your father and your mother be glad. And let her who bore you rejoice.
Okay, what's that saying? Yeah, we you remember when we first started out, we said that, you know, um what a. Uh uh some kids will bother some people and and cause some trouble, and then there's some other kids. That won't, that that'll be proud of. This is kinda re- what what are we saying? What is it saying here?
Well, you know, the as as me being a parent, you know. I love it when our our children are doing things that uh we see lined up with the word of God. Um that they're moving um in a direction that honors God. Uh as they perform their work. Or serve others or share with others who are in need. That just brings us some some delight that we can see that. So I can only imagine how God sees us when we move that way.
Amen.
When we do that same thing, the same feeling we have for our children, he has for us. Um and so we we have to mimic that as parents and as children. Uh cause we learn how to honor for the joy of getting delightment out of them. Um and especially if it's, you know, that's your child, and and I can imagine how, you know. Uh my wife feels when she sees, you know. Kayla do the thing that um is worthy of God, um worthy of of of. That makes her feel like she's adding value to someone's life. But more importantly, that she's serving, you know, as God's hands in this thing. Um wow, just, you know. The joy that you feel that they are doing that. And we we're always saying we're blessed because they they're on the right move, so we're not dealing with, you know. Some of the woes of the the world that you, I mean, pastor, you just said it earlier, that, you know. The the suicide murder situation, murder suicide situations. You you know, those aren't things to, you know, those are heavy on the heart when our our children go through that. Um so again, how will God see that from his children moving that way?
Hmm, mm hmm. Right? What what does anybody else see in in here? What what? Thank you for that.
Yep.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
And I believe that that Jesus Christ as our Father.
Mm hmm.
He greatly rejoices, you know, when we're living according to the word and we're sharing the word. And we're in line with the word. And not just, you know, being a churchgoer or just hearing the word and not demonstrating the word. You know, so we as we we teach our children. You know, we teach them about the word of God, and when we teach them about the word of God, and you see them living for God and doing the things. You know, that God has called them to do, that's a delight. And you know, he delights in us when we do what he tell us to do.
Amen.
So we just have to, we we just got to do what he tell us to do. You know, and the word is so valuable and the the enemy come to take it out of your heart. Soon as you hear it, he come to take the word of God out of your heart. Cause he don't want you to be a student of the word, because when you begin to know the word, you know who he is. You know his tactics, you know his strategies, you know his his um, you know his tricks, you know him. Yeah, because the word reveals really who he is. So he don't want you to get that wisdom. He wants you to stay dumb and you know, and you just. Jumping up and down and you know, and you don't have no substance in your spirit.
Mm hmm.
You got to have substance in your spirit, and how you get that is through the word of God. It's through his word, you know, receiving his word, like you said earlier. You know, people can quote the scriptures, but quoting the scriptures can't help you if you don't receive it. And you got to open your heart, open your heart, open your mind, open your spirit. That the word will enter in, and when it enter in, it'll gonna bring forth some thirty, some sixty, some a hundred fold in your life.
Investment. Now, that's what I'm talking about, return on ROI.
Amen, amen.
Yes, yes. So imagine that we, you know, the thing is, is imagine uh the throne when we please, when we please God.
Hmm.
Imagine what's happening on the throne.
Amen.
When we please God.
Yeah.
Right?
Mm hmm.
And the deal is Satan wanna put us um out and 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 he wants to embarrass our father.
Mm hmm, mm.
Not just us, now this, he wants to embarrass our father.
Yes.
Right?
Mm hmm.
Wants us to climb the ladder just high enough to fall.
Not God.
Come on now.
Yes.
Does that seem like, you know, those who say um. We shouldn't have to have all these food pantries around. People can get jobs on their own. I got mine, they can pull up their their um, pull up by their their own shoes and do their own thing. Or they don't need insurance, I got a job, you know? They can get their own way. I mean, I see more of that today. And when church members or church people are doing that, not Christian, but church people are doing that. That 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 gives an appearance that the church is viewing people that way, those who don't know. The the meaning of being a Christian, and they see those people working that way. So, yes, pastor, you said that that shows, that's embarrassment to God, because we're supposed to be his spokesman.
That's right, you you know, absolutely, right? So who doesn't know anything, a little bit about the scripture, whatever you've done to the least of these, you've done unto me, right?
Yeah.
Anything wrong.
So if you turn me away from the pantry, cause you know, you think this, that, and the other, okay, so what what have you done?
Yeah.
So, you know, that's that's the ignorance of the word. So folks are getting into these conservative things and stuff, I'm, well, I'm just a con- you know, conservative. Well, Jesus gave away food, I'm sorry. But fact, he kept on making it till the bakery had.
That's right.
Y'all came and take these, you know, they won't even scrap.
Leftovers.
They won't eat scraps, what? Twelve, twelve baskets, which, how about that?
Yes.
You see? Right, but people will call that welfare. Yes, it was for those people welfare.
Hmm. Hmm.
Jesus believed in healthcare too.
That's right.
He went in one place and healed everybody in the town. Everybody.
Yes, he did.
You mean, if you had, if you had a splinter in your finger, it was healed. If you had it, you know, from everything.
Amen.
Just showing his completeness.
Hmm.
And then he walked in and said, I can't do much here.
Hmm.
Come on, somebody, is anybody ever?
Yeah.
Amen.
I can't, I can't do much and stuff, cause y'all ain't acting right. You ain't even receiving it, uh Sister Gwen.
Amen.
Mm hmm.
Like you said, they didn't receive it.
Mm hmm.
So he said, when that happens, then make sure y'all get your feet ready to dust your feet off.
Ooh.
Amen. Amen.
Right. So, so yeah, see, let me tell y'all, people need to understand, don't get. Understand, don't get it twisted.
Yeah.
Right.
About God's grace and mercy.
Now, that's the cost I don't pay.
Right, no, don't, don't get that twisted. Yeah, he does have grace and mercy and stuff, but man, do not reject it.
Amen.
Yeah, look at, look, look at the whole Bible now. Don't, don't, look, look at the whole Bible.
Mm hmm.
Uh he he, Jesus, I'm, I didn't see him force feeding anybody. He offered the bread.
That's right.
Yeah, yes, he did.
Yes, he did. He he offered the bread, but I ain't see him force feed nobody. Okay, let's go, let's go.
That's the one thing that I was thinking on, when you were just talking is, um, don't reject and don't um. Prevent anyone else from receiving.
Oh, no, don't do that now.
Hmm.
Amen.
And there there's some real serious consequences when they say if you reject, if you you get, you put a stumbling block in somebody else.
That's right.
God don't like that. Don't, don't.
Absolutely.
Messing nobody else up. You know, if you gonna go into damnation, you go, he said, take, make that a solo walk.
There you go. Right.
You don't, don't take nobody with you now, cause. There's some special, special, special stuff. There's some consequences to that, right?
Wow, yes.
And so let's, let's be careful. Okay, let's let's go to um twenty six and twenty eight. Twenty six through twenty eight, get all all of those right there. Twenty three is chapter twenty three, so just in case somebody joins us or something, chapter twenty three, twenty six through twenty eight. I got to slow down.
Uh my son, give me your heart. And let your eyes observe my ways. For a harlot is a deep pit. And a seduct- seductress is a narrow well.
Hmm.
She also lies in wait as for a victim. And increases the unfateful among men.
Hmm.
Wow.
All right, we got to get all the non adults off the line, they got. Wrong folk talk up here. What is it saying right here? My, all right, you hear the affection of my son.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
It 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 sounds like he's sitting down.
Uh having that heart to heart talk.
What, 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 Vince?
Having that heart to heart talk.
Yeah, elderly, you got, come on now, we we've been chatting here, but now, my son, my my son.
Yep.
You got to hear this right here.
Mm hmm.
Right?
Hmm.
First of all.
Mm hmm.
He didn't say, y'all remember um in uh the the speech Julius season? Countrymen, give me your ears, lend me your ears.
Yeah, yeah.
He didn't ask for it.
Nope. He asked for that heart.
I mean, that that this need to be in your heart.
Mm hmm.
Okay. This what we getting ready to say?
Mm hmm.
Don't just need to be in your head. It does not just need to be in your ear canal.
Yeah.
Right.
This needs to be in your heart.
In your heart.
Right.
Sounds like a life or death talk to me.
And he says, now this is when Solomon was walking straight now, okay?
Mm hmm.
Says, and let your eyes.
Observe my ways.
Observe my ways. What he, what is he saying there, y'all?
I'm walking like you need to see.
I'm walking, I'm I'm walking this sermon.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
And that's when that folks, I'm here to tell you. We have got to walk our sermon.
That's right.
We could preach and use three preacher wad. Preaching, use three preacher wags. And if we still mean, if we still conniving, if we don't love nobody, you know, working to try to help. The church or help people even outside the church. That, that stuff ain't working, you know, you might be able to put them three points together, uh, three points and a hymn.
And it ain't working.
And people would be messing around and jumping across pews like it's the Olympics. And hateful listening. So the thing is, he's saying, I'm demonstrating this piece. Now, we know Solomon has some problems, you know, David has some problems, you know, all of them has some problems, why? Because they are men.
That's right.
Are men, they do have flesh. But he said, he was like, son, here you go, man, I'm just, you know, it's like, you, can you see this talk, man? Look, look, let's, let's, you know, all jokes aside, what he's saying. You need to get this right here lesson. Now what lesson is this?
A harlot is a deep pit.
It's a deep, what's a harlot?
A wayward woman.
A wayward woman. Okay, so, so I, I want y'all to s- to see. That the Bible, it continues to talk about marriage. Even all the way to Revelation until the end, there's going to be a bride groom. That is going to marry a bride. He is not coming back for a harlot. He is coming back, come, right?
That's right.
To be married to a church. All right, a harlot is somebody that will lay down with anybody. A harlot is transactional. What, what do I mean when it's transactional? Harlot is making a transaction, what, what do I say that when it's transactional? That's, that's a three syllable word, so I'm, I'm showing y'all my education right there. What does it mean transactional? Let me pull off one of my books off the shelf back of y'all. What does it mean that she's transactional? We need to know about this. That's why I called it a harlot, what, or she, she called a harlot, what is, what does it mean? To have a transactional relationship? What does it mean to have a covenant relationship? What's a transactional relationship? Yeah, come on folks, y'all trying, y'all, look, y'all, come on now. I told all the children to leave the box.
Well, not go, go into a lot of detail, but to me, the transitional, when you asking the question about the transitional relationship. Is giving something to get something.
I'm getting, I'm getting money out of you or some pleasure out of you or something, and after you leave.
Right, that's right.
I don't care what happened to you, don't care if you don't come back.
No, no investment.
No investment.
One night stand.
There you go, it's transactional. Transactional, you good, I'm good, okay, later. That's transactional. And folks are having transactional relationships these days. And quid pro quo relationship. If you do this, I do that. Right, then it's just transactional and, and the thing is, is this is, this is one thing we need to learn as grown folk. In the right context, God can you, God gives you anything the desire of your heart. Folks used to talk about sex as is of its next, don't talk about sex in church, well, how did everybody get him? Uh, is all of y'all named Mary? How many of y'all, how, how many of your mommas named Mary? Everybody mama ain't named Mary.
That's right, break it down, amen.
Alright, and, and what we're dealing with is that God said, you know, I'll, I'm, that you have the most wonderful thing. The most pleasurable thing, the unifying and gratifying thing, I just want you to be in covenant. Transactional relationship, cause it causes chaos. This is what he's saying, now, either Don, or Don, do you have your hand?
No, it's me.
Okay, okay.
Talking about words dripping with honey. Way in the beginning of the chapter, so. Laying out a trap. And you may not come back home. And the reason you may not come back home is because your life might. And that's the thing that. People don't hear, they just hear the good stuff and you hear about it through high school, you know. But those with wisdom or those that are guided by their spirit will. Flee from that, you know, even if they get laughed at or mocked or. You know, you see the high school guys out there smoking and looking at you crazy and. Saying, you know, you, you're nothing, or you're, you know, you're a joke, you know. I had four the other day and all this, you know. And you're just kind of like, well, I guess I'm a joke, but you know what, um, I'm, I'm at peace when I go to sleep.
There you go.
You know, if I, if I go to sleep by myself, then I'm at peace. And uh, that's the kind of thing that young uh, folk need to hear because. When they do the right thing. You know, going to have peaceful sleep. And they're going to be revigorated when they wake up and they're going to feel encouraged and they're not going to be looking behind their back and they're not going to be. Looking for somebody around the corner looking for them with a baseball bat, you know, or whatever. So what that does is it creates jealousy, hate, fear, insecurity, so. One night stands aren't really, should not be popular because. Um, it's a death trap. And some people may not get out of high school just because of that. So, you know, for me to make sixty four. You know, I might be the joke of the neighborhood, but guess what, I made it sixty four. There you go. So when it, when it comes down to it, it's, you know. What is your self-worth? Introspection, you know, uh, judging yourself every day. Even if you make a mistake, you know. What can I do to fix that, or what can I do to change that, or what can I do to make it better, or what can I do to? You know, make somebody else's life better. You know, you still be able to go home and, and sleep well at night, you know.
Right, so, so um, Scott, we're, we're talking about making sure. To, to keep things holy and to keep them sacred. And to keep them in covenant. We didn't say walk around like a monk. We said, be in covenant. That, that's, that's the deal, you know, um, it is. Um, who was that? Who, who was, who was that, Hagar? Anybody remember Hagar?
Yes.
What was her job?
To bring forth that baby.
The thing is, is that. What God wants us to do. Is to do the things the way he designed. You see what I'm saying? But because it was even, you know, um. Throughout, what, what, what God has shown us in different places is that even, oh. When things even don't go exactly like he wanted it. If you put it in the context of covenant. Even when Sarah, right? Diverted. Because they did it in covenant. He took care of the generation and promised.
Amen.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so he took care of the other family, God took care of the other family. I'm sorry.
I said, it was his will that he, you know, that it went that way.
That's right, he, he like, okay, so, so the thing is that he didn't want, you know, he doesn't want us doing, out here doing the wild thing. You know. And, so, okay, let's do that part, okay, and, and it's saying. Uh, that there are situations that you might think that they are the victim. But indeed. We're becoming the victim. Y'all hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Oh, I'm going out and doing this right here and hey, I did this right here and I did this right here, and you might think you the king for a little bit. Okay, but you acted actually the victim. You know. And so how many, you know, how many players are lonely today? You know, how, how many players are lonely today? Now, now my, my saying, I think I got it from, you know, I, sometimes I get these sayings, I don't know where it just came, where they come from and stuff. But sometimes it stick with, but I, this is what I tell the young bucks, you know, they're trying to go this place and that place and trying to be that player. I said, them young girls ain't gonna wipe your butt while you're down. You need to have somebody you gonna stick with. That you gonna have covenant, that you can take care of and they can take care of you.
Yeah, it's about character.
If so, it, it's about relationship. Relationship past a certain act. That's what we were saying, we'll see, when you got that surface act, that's a physical thing, it's just a physical thing. And God always wants different than just a physical thing. There's some churches that's physical and emotional.
That's right.
But God wants covenant.
Yes, relationship.
I want a relationship with you. Not even folks like, well, God want a contract, no, he don't want a contract, he want a covenant.
That's right.
You tear up a contract, you know how you are. Walk out of there, I don't like this contract, I'm tearing it up. That's the deal, I don't like this right here, I'm tearing.
That's right.
No, this is a covenant. Covenant, and this is what God wants that co- commitment.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking pastor.
Long term. God deals in event, in what? God deals in the eternal.
Eternal, yes.
Yes, the eternal, the long range. And so, uh, we're talking about, you know, the one, one night stand, God ain't in the one night stand.
No, he's not.
He said, I never leave you nor forsake you. You know, you know. When is a harlot promise that? Get up and give my money, there you go. Okay, so, right, uh, uh, by the way, what was your name?
That's alright.
But, but God knows, but God knows my name.
Yeah, they got a song. I know my name.
God knows my name. A harlot don't want to sit there and know your name and your troubles and your.
Yeah, my wife knows my name.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, absolutely. And so there's no deeper relationship than covenant relationship. And it's a shame that there are people who gonna live and die and not have covenant. Ain't experienced covenant at the job, ain't spent this covenant, they haven't experienced covenant in relationships. Have not experienced covenant um, with each, each other. And have not experienced covenant with Jesus Christ. Just bouncing from space to space. And we supposed to be moving from glory to glory. And that's how it should be in relationships, you start young and this right here, you supposed to be going from here to there, to, to, to glory, to glory. And some people going bouncing from hell to hole to hellhole.
That's true, tell the truth. Gonna make you free.
I, you know, there, there ain't no need in teaching this right here in hypothetical situations, you know what I'm saying?
Amen, let's get real now.
They say, keep it one hundred.
Well, you can't teach it hypothetical because it is real.
Is, is messing up a whole lot of situations.
Yes, yes, it is.
A lot of church.
Lot, a lot of people getting caught in temporary relationships. And feel good relationships. And, and, and didn't understand, God meant it when he said, look, I'm gonna set the example. You just saw it, he said, son, give me your heart and let your eyes absorb my ways. This is the thing that God is saying, right, let your eyes observe my ways. Will never leave you nor forsake you. So, those are the kind of people and relationships you need to be in, like the ones I'm telling you to be in. She lies in, or wait, in wait as for a victim and increases the unfateful. What'd you say? Talk about it. What's happening? What's the Bible telling us about it? And increases the unfaithful.
I mean, she doesn't have a heart, she's not really caring about the person's character. Looking at her, at his wallet or what she can get out of him. And then once she gets that, she just. And then once she gets that, she just, drops him by the side of the road. And what, and what does that come back to? It comes back to the one that was robbed. Right? And I'm talking about, uh, uh, the Good Samaritan. And the one that was left on the side of the road that was robbed. Right? He lost everything. But, uh. Good Samaritan came by and. You know, stood in the mud with him and. Tended to his wounds and. Put him on a horse and took him down to the inn. And, uh. Yeah, it's dangerous, it's dangerous, uh, to get caught into that, that's a Jezebel spirit.
Right? What, and, and it's, um, it, the thing is, is that. She is waiting or the situation is waiting to trip you up.
Absolutely.
That's what it's there for. It ain't there by mistake, it's there for, it is there to trip you up.
Amen.
Pastor? Let me read this in the message Bible.
Okay, if I can stand it. We can stand it, go ahead.
Dear child. I want your full attention.
Okay.
Please do, do what I show you. A prostitute is a bottomless pit. A loose woman can get you in deep trouble fast. She'll take you for all you've got. She's worse than a pack of thieves.
Well, there you go, um, Scott. It was that man beside the road. But it's worse. Yeah. He got taken. Go ahead, man.
That, that was it right there.
That was it, okay. That's enough. I'm asking for some more. That's bad enough, right?
Yep. Wow.
So let's make it broad, you know, even though it's specific and he's telling about sexual immorality and what can go on, right? There's so many things that. And happen to tear up people's lives, right? You know, it, it, you know, it's prevalent. Why? Because, um, you know. One of the strongest desires for mankind is to procreate. Right. Yeah, okay, i- is, that, that's a, 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 a natural desire. That God put in us to make sure that we'll continue to have more of us.
Amen.
Right?
Yes.
So it's there. It just needs to be directed right.
Yep, in covenant.
Right, ain't nothing wrong with the desire, just desire the right thing in the right place.
Amen.
Right?
Yes.
And so, you know, so, it, it, well, and the church has got to learn, not to be mummified.
Right, absolutely.
Don't say, uh-uh, no, let's just talk about that she swallowed a pumpkin seed.
Yeah.
Nice. Just because you don't talk about it, don't make the desire.
God, they know, that ain't never kept nobody lay across.
Amen.
Yep.
You can't say that, you better say it. You better say it, they better know it. And give them a response to it and give them this right here, you know, ain't nobody taught me this when I was a teenager.
Nope.
Nope.
Ain't nobody, they jumped all around it.
Yes, they did.
Skip every run, you ain't even hear hardly in the church. Somebody was saying, are you talking about me? And the Bible might be saying, yes, we talking about you.
That's right.
That's why we have to talk, speak with boldness. And we, we got to speak with boldness and then we love people up, but you got to have.
That's right. And we should be saying what the Bible has to say about it.
What is that, what the Bible say? Yes, don't be filling in the gaps with nothing else. Don't add nothing one, don't take nothing one.
Amen.
So that's a, that's a trap. We know it's a trap. And it's been trapped, a whole lot of people been in that trap.
Oh, yes.
Whole lot of bet, trap, in, uh, big time preachers, little time preachers, um, you know. Oh, everybody, you know, people been in that, in that trap, it is a strong trap.
Amen.
And so this man said, sit down with his son and don't let him just go in there and then come talk to him afterwards. No, this is the conversation I had with Anthony.
That's right.
In East Carolina, I said, over you going to the car, I got one more talk that I got to remind him. We ran, ran, running around that building before I left him, I was like, let me go around here and let me get this tear out of my eye. So I can.
Right.
But Doc said, look, there gonna be a whole lot out here, son, but don't get distracted.
Amen.
Don't get distracted.
That's right.
Don't let this derail your whole college career.
Amen.
Yeah, it was kind of similar to what Brother Scott was saying earlier about, you know, being in high school and you end up, you know, getting, um, distracted. And caught up and get off track, totally off track, so, yeah.
And I believe, um, that, 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 uh, it, it's so dangerous. That you had whole sections of people who just say, today, they say, I'm gonna be celibate, right? You know, the Bible.
Yes.
I wish you could be celibate like me and stuff, but if you can't get married, so you won't burn.
That's right. That's what it says.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure I'm up in there.
I'll go with the word now.
Everybody didn't have to go and say, I'm, I'm gonna go off here here, and everybody can't go up in the mountain and be celibate and just home, alright? So, so, some folk had to be down here. Since you down here pastor, make sure you marry somebody and stay with that one. How about that one? There's no beat everywhere.
Amen.
Right?
That's a good thing.
Sure.
Pastor.
Yes.
You know what you said about your son to college? I say the same thing to my daughter. My oldest daughter, she going to Maryland, go to college, and I told her, I said, sit right there, let me talk to you. I said, no, when you get there. A boy gonna tell you how good you look. Then he gonna go around the corner and tell the other girl how good she look. Then she said, Ella Feller was talking to her, then when she came home, she said, Daddy, you know what? He was telling the truth. But she said nice thing to me, when I saw him one day, he was over there on the other side talking to another girl. So I told you that, cause I'm a man, I know what we'll do.
Okay.
He finished college and she got married before she had a child. But like you say, we gotta talk to them and let them know that everything look good and good.
That's right.
Lot of time them football players, and I told them basketball players, they tall and handsome, they don't mean a thing. We have to be careful when our kids go away from us, they tell them exactly what they look for. Cause we don't tell them, they don't know what they look for.
That's exactly right.
They don't know, cause they, all they think, they see a body look good and that's okay.
Amen. Amen.
And, 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 and like you were saying back in the days. Like the pumpkin you say. Wasn't no pumpkin. It wasn't no, it was a seed, but it wasn't no pumpkin seed. When the child make a mistake and you're a big person in the church. Their, their wife wears a, something round, like she was having the baby, send their daughter to some, um. Dads, wherever they from.
That's right. That's right.
Oh, you done had the baby, your, your wife had the baby. And, and the, uh, the daughter beat her to have a baby, but they tried to hide that. You got to get hide stuff, that'll grow into the children, they believe that.
Yeah.
And everything that, that you tell them, the truth and the right way to go, some of them don't listen. And okay, daddy don't know what he talking about, and mama don't know what she talking about. I know. So my daughter learned the easy way, I'm glad she did, cause I tell you what, I ain't take care of nobody's children.
Well, the thing is, is that, you know, it will help everybody. If we talk about it and tell, you know, and tell the truth, even when we made mistakes.
That's right.
That's right, yeah.
Say, this is one, and this is what I know. You see?
Yeah.
Amen.
Yeah.
That's right, pastor.
And, and, and it help everybody. Throughout. And so, that's what he, he's saying, son, you know, let's, let's, this is what's happening. And the, the, the church needs to tell folks. Now, there are harlots out there that are not female harlots.
Tell the truth.
Okay.
That's right.
Alright. Okay. Then, and there's some, there's some, some, some harlot situations out there that are not just people. There are situations that's calling for us to be unfaithful.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's right.
We can all put it on the woman and stuff, but I'm here to tell you that there are different harlot situations. Sometimes money is a harlot.
That's right.
Um, you, you know, your hobby can be a harlot. All this stuff can take away from the focus of the covenant.
That's right.
Amen.
Yeah, a harlot, you know, might be trying to feed her, her family, cause she got abandoned. So, we gotta pray for, you know. People and not, not treat them like they're a label. But treat them like God would treat them.
Right.
Give them the word.
Right. So the main thing here is, if it is that, don't be distracted. That's what he's telling his son. Don't be distracted.
That's right.
Don't, don't let anything take you away from your covenant.
Amen.
Make sense?
But it happened right in the church.
Amen.
Alright, so, we, we going through some things here, we, we got it done and stuff, but it's about that time. You know, it's good, but that thing went fast right there.
Amen.
There was some Bible saying right here. So let's, let's, um, focus on some things. Who wants to put, um. Uh, you came with somebody on your heart, um, tonight, or something on your heart? Let's, let's, let's put it in this prayer circle and let's get it done tonight. Let's, get, put it right in front of the throne. Let Jesus translate it, let the Holy Spirit dispatch angels. What are we gonna send? What are we, who, who, who we gonna put on the throne, put on the altar today? What are we gonna put on the altar?
My Aunt Peggy, let me stand for healing.
Amen.
Ms. Vicki and her, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Ms. Vicki and her grandchildren for healing.
Amen.
Provision.
Uh, my mom.
Mom.
I'm for the church and, um, elders and, um, everyone in the, um, audio class. And my family. I'm for my family.
I'd also like to put for the youth. And everybody that's working with the youth and, um, youth and sacrificing their time, in myself for strength.
Amen.
I'd like to put everybody in the prayer circle.
Thank you for including me.
Yeah, strength, strength for the pastors and the elders and everyone in the church body, um. Continually softening the hearts in the church body, um, all over the world. Soften our hearts more. Me too, you know, we all do. It's, it's a practice, but. When we, when we do that, uh, God gets the glory in it. So I'm praying that. Uh, for everybody.
Amen.
I'd also like to put everybody dealing with, um, grief and loss during the holiday season for, um, just comfort and strength.
Amen. I, and I'd like to add to that, uh, Sister Ashley, that the body of Christ be more sensitive about that. And, and be listening for that and, uh, be. And supportive in that situation.
I, I like to put our daughters in the prayer circle, um, and there's a couple individuals that I'm, um. Trying to minister to, um, at any opportunity I can, that they, um, find what they're looking for in Christ, uh, and get connected. Let the words be walk, be seen in the walk that they do. Um, and so, once they find Christ, I think they'll, um, really find the answer to what they're looking for.
I put my grandson at, at the city of us. Just put him in the circle and keep him in prayer. Please.
Amen, amen.
I, I, I'm asking for prayer that we do more studies. And more, it's, you know, coming out with the word like we did last night. Because it was, it was a deep, it was a deep study. But I think we got understanding and, you know, we need this more.
Yeah, ow.
Amen.
Amen, amen. Think somebody had the microphone off.
I would like to request prayer for, um, Brother Eldred and, um, Sister Janelle and their family. As they deal with, um, some situations going on in their family. Um, and pray for our children. Um, also for Ms. Bee, I think she's been a little bit under the weather, and Elder Seroy. Um, prayers for Sister Marguerite and for, um, Sister Judy. And for, um, Sister Diane.
Amen.
Amen.
I would like to ask for, um, prayer for a coworker, um, she comes to me, she said her aunt is, um, being very depressed. And she asked that I put her in our prayer. Um, I also wanna pray for another coworker who just had surgery. So healing for her. And I would also would like to pray for all the young kids.
Amen.
Alright, and make sure folks, when you're putting people in, uh, in the prayer list, and, and, and let folks know that they're being prayed for.
Amen.
Let's, let's be that bold and, and stuff, let's not, you know.
Amen.
Pray for people on the DL. You know, let, let's, um, let's be bold, like, hey, look, I, I believe in your healing.
Yes.
I'm praying for your family, I'm praying, amen?
Amen.
Yes, indeed. Cause there are a lot of times people are saying, I'm gonna pray for you and ain't being prayed for. Being obedient, and we need to express that obedience, cause we know that obedience is better than sacrifice.
Yes.
Yeah, I like.
Go ahead.
I like to put my, uh, brother-in-law, uh, in for, and his sister and my sister. In for strength as they stand by his mom, mom and, um. Healing, healing, for strength and healing.
Amen.
Um, I would like to request prayer for, um, Brother Creason, his absence tonight and his family. And also for pastor in, um, different situations he's dealing with right now. Just for strength and direction.
Amen.
Um, I would like to, um, request prayer for, uh, I got a couple of friends that, um. They're going through a lot of treatments and it's, it's really hard right now and praying for healing for them. they're going through a lot of treatments and it's it's really hard right now and praying for healing for them.
Well, thank y'all for that. One of the things I want to just reemphasize is that I'm trying to learn. Especially one of the things that Sister Ashley just brought up in us as mature saints, right? Mature saints. Mature saints should have discernment. If if people are going through, there's a time to say cheer up. And there's a time to weep with them. And mature saints have to learn it. Amen. I've been through situations where I've seen chaplains that'll come in a room and start prophesying that this person's gonna do this and this person's gonna do this, and God done told them they gonna take them home. And then their boldness saying this and that and stuff. We have to be cautious.
That's right.
And sensitive. And during this Christmas season, yes, we want Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, but read the room.
Yes.
Read the room. Everybody might not be having a Merry Christmas right now.
Amen, amen.
And and it may be a weeping man doing for nighttime. But then we can do, we have to do joy tomorrow. We, they might need a night of weeping. Does that make?
Yes.
Okay, I I just want, I'm I'm speaking to myself too, because I'm always trying to push it, you know, and I want everybody to be there. But everybody, people have been through and going through this year. And we need to show sensitivity. And um there's another word I'm looking for. It's not um yeah, compassion, compassion.
Yes. Amen.
Okay. Yes, indeed.
Oh, um, could you please pray for my um Uncle Lewis too? He just um, his wife just passed away of seventy-seven years. I mean, like, he is so close to his wife. He says he's ready to go be with her. So his sons, I got four cousin boys, men that um they're they're kind of concerned for him.
You say they've been married for seventy-seven years?
Yeah, yeah, he's um, they're they, my mom's oldest, um, one of her her older sisters, a lot older. Yeah, they've been married seventy-seven years. Yeah, and we just had the funeral last Saturday and he is so sharp in his mind and can walk real good. But he he was so close to his wife and
Imagine so. Seventy-seven years.
Yeah, and he was the caregiver for her for a long time.
Wow. Well, let's lift him. Let's let's lift him.
Uncle Louis, yeah.
So, Dawn, your own, why don't you lead us in a prayer that would include Uncle Lewis and all these other things that we talked about, please?
Okay, um, dear Lord, I just thank you for everybody that's not on the call and that is on the call. Everybody going through things right now, oh Father God, um, everybody that needs strength, that's on this call and and um people that have lost loved ones, people that need healing that's um for different people that they know. Lord, I just thank you for bringing healing in their bodies. Lord, I just thank you for um restoration in the family. Um, and a lot of people need that. And a lot of people that are going through sadness right now and have um losses. Um, Vicky and um granddaughters and, Lord, thank you for that. Thank you for all the ones going through things like that. Thank you for Uncle Lewis, and please um give him strength and uh help him, Lord. Um, all the broken-hearted ones.
Yes.
There's many broken-hearted ones and and people that need healing and and people that need comfort. And um people that might be even striving with um their their finances or anything. They'll need food during during this time. Lord, help us to be sensitive and every, use every opportunity when we're out there to to share your love and whether it's food or money or uh prayer or encouraging word. Lord, let us be your light out there in this darkness. And that's what you care about, Lord, is be in your hands and feet out there in the world. We thank you for that, Lord. We just thank you for every person and what they shared tonight too. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord Jesus.
Look at Jesus.
In Jesus' name. Amen, amen. What a sincere prayer. Thank you much. Thank everybody uh for all you have contributed tonight. Just showing up was a contribution and we thank you so much. Just as uh we pray, keep your head on a swivel, watch out for one another. And watch out for the person in the mirror too, because sometimes it can be tough.
Next Wednesday, we will have our Christmas program.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we will not have the regular Bible study.
That's right.
Please come in person.
Come in person.
Witness the glory of God.
Some people been working on it now.
Sister Sophia is, they're gonna, um, is there any need of food and things like that? Just or just spring food or something?
I don't think so. Okay, I didn't. You could check with Pastor Vanessa though, but I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. Thank you for that. Thank you for that concern. Okay, all right, folks. We'll let everybody know what we need to help out with.
Great, great lesson. God, we thank God for you and we pray for your restoration. We pray for your peace. We pray
Thank you.
Mighty name of Jesus. And thank God for he's doing in your life. He's doing awesome things in your life. Thank God for that. He's taken you to another level, higher level. So we just thank you for you and your wife. We thank God for the church. Praise the Lord. God has put us with you. Thank God for that.
We thank God for y'all too. We thank God for everybody.
Hallelujah.
Thank y'all so much.
Love y'all. Love everybody.
All right, good night.
Good night. Good night. Good night, y'all.
Thank y'all so.